All right, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join with me in the pledge to our flag and country.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose soul we believe, liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer.
Let's pray. A loving Father, you are good, Lord. Lord, I thank you that I live in a community, God, that invites your authority to their city meeting. God, so I just pray, Lord, that you would just make your wisdom known here tonight. You'd make your presence known here tonight, God, that you, your purposes would be done here tonight, Father God. It's in the powerful name of Jesus that we give this meeting to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Chad. Called to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of December 1st. Item number two is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. We have none. Item number three is consent agenda. We have one item on the, two items on the consent agenda. One is the approval of the minutes of the Special Public Works Authority meeting of November 10th. And B is the approval of the 2021 calendar of the year schedule for regular meetings.
Before you approve the consent agenda, I don't know whether you want to discuss it or pull off the calendar, but I just want to point out that we have in your schedule of meetings the holidays that are adjacent to meetings. And it seems like every year there's somebody that says, well, why are we meeting? There was a holiday yesterday. Well, because you all adopt this schedule over your deceptive.
Why don't we go through it?
It is page 173 of the agenda packet. 173.
That's, that's the page that shows the holidays that Leroy is referring to. Martin Luther King, President's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day.
So there are several city council meetings that there is a holiday the day before our meeting. And most of them are not holidays that people traditionally take vacation. Some of them are, and so we just make you aware of that in case you want to consider either not meeting that or moving that meeting before you adopt it. And of course, April 20th, we always skip that one because it falls in the eight or niners bean supper. But just want to make sure I point this out to you so that you are aware of this when you adopt this schedule.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, Leroy.
I don't have a problem with any of them.
Any concerns by the council?
No, I don't either. Make a motion to approve.
This is your chance.
I don't see a problem.
Second.
This is your chance. It's on the consent agenda. It's not, unless we wanted to handle it separately, we'll move it with the consent.
Okay.
Okay, everybody clear?
Yep.
Okay, so we have two items on the consent agenda again. The Special Public Works Authority meeting of November 10th, and then the 2021 calendar of scheduled regular meetings, including those questions about the day after those holidays. I hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to approve the consent agenda. Item number four, consider and take action in respect to resolution 2020-22 approving and authorizing the clean water loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. Leroy, are you taking the initial lead on this?
Either Kim or our bond counsel or our financial advisor can make the initial presentation.
Kim?
I'm going to have John.
Kim and John, it just got to you. That quick.
Okay. Well, we got to this month quick, didn't we?
We certainly did. It only took a few years, but we got to the, we're riding on the precipice here. Do I have to keep my mask the whole time talking?
No.
No.
Thank you. Well, tell you what, let me pass this around.
I certainly don't want to keep you guys longer than you want to stay here tonight. Sometimes it's better to be lucky than good. We're in a position right now with interest rates to where the city, you were within two 100s or what we call basis points of the level rate ever that the board ever put out as far as closing on a drinking water or clean water loan. In your guys' case, this is a clean water loan. What I've passed out to each one of you is where we were back in August and what we're looking at today with the basic cash flow showing what the debt service payments would be based on the rate that was locked in on, we have two pieces. We have the $16 million of potential total loan, but we're only going, we only lock rate, locked an interest rate on the first 8 million. We plan on closing that transaction within the next two weeks, and then we'll close the second transaction to have that fall into next calendar, next calendar year, we'll close that one on January 4th. So you're very fortunate today that the rate that we showed you approximately three months ago, we were at a 1.59%. That's a fixed rate for the full, almost 18-year term. That rate has dropped based on the market, and you're down at a 1.45% interest rate. So you're basically getting a fixed rate of 1.45% for almost 18 years. When you look at the evolution of capital infrastructure repairs and addressing your needs, you're at, you're in a very good position to have been able to address this project with such a low interest rate. And we, we certainly, like I said, sometimes it's better to be lucky. You fell into a very good, low-interest-rate market, and that rate on the 8 million is locked in. The board typically, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board will typically lock the rate within 10 days of the time that you close the loan. We plan on closing this on the 16th, just the 8 million.
So it could drop on the next one, on the next day?
Well, if it drops, it'll be whatever it is sometime around Christmas. We'd have a, obviously, I hate to say, you know, we have a new president.
Yeah, might not drop.
And so we're going to see what happens. There's a lot of speculation, but it's pure speculation right now. We heard a lot of speculation that would happen around the election time period. We had a little bit of a bump, and then it's kind of settled back down. But fortunately, out of the, the last week, the lowest rate, it kept dropping, and we got to the rate that we locked in yesterday, or based today, based on yesterday's index that the board uses. That was the lowest in the last couple of weeks. So it's, it's trended down today. The rates came out late in the afternoon after we'd already locked the rate in, and the rates were flat, so. This saves you from the time we spoke last, a quarter of a million dollars in interest. For those of you wondering what does that mean interest rate-wise, that saved the city a quarter of a million. Now, that's based on, that's assuming on your next 8 million, you get the same rate. If that rate bumps up a little bit, then that cuts a little bit into those savings. But this was by far the lowest, lower rate than we expected during the whole process as far as the financing process of this project. So hopefully bids come in well, you've got great interest rates, you're able to pass on the cost of improving your wastewater system at very low capital costs, and so that's very fortunate for the community.
What's the, what's the window for locking in the next one after the first year?
I would say sometime like Christmas Eve, you know, sometime the day or two before Christmas.
So it can be, it can be locked in this calendar year for?
It's gonna be.
It can, it will be.
Will be.
And we'll push, we'll push to get it locked in as quick as we can, but right now, we've already kind of pushed, you've got this rate locked in about 15 days early. And so we're pushing, we'll be pushing for the, the next rate to be locked in. Nobody knows what it's going to be from day to day, but hopefully the market kind of stays where it's at now for the next couple of weeks, so. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have regarding this. We're ready to move forward and get the financing part halfway done and do the other half here shortly, so.
Okay. It's been a journey.
It's, it has been a journey. It's been a long journey, and every, I think it was every part of the process, not just the, the project itself, not just the financing, that I think that it's, it's, you followed the right path, I think. Whatever that means, I'm just the finance guy, so. I'll stay in my lane.
You're thinking dollars and cents, though. That probably is the right path.
Just say timing is good.
Yeah, so. Like I said, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any other, any questions from the council? All right.
Nate Ellis, your bond counsel's here. If you have any questions regarding the resolution that you have in front of you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Leroy, any comments or questions?
We're following the schedule that we laid out, moving forward to start the wastewater treatment plant. We open bids next week, and at our next council meeting, we will entertain awarding the bids for the construction. And so we're on schedule, and we keep moving the project forward.
You need a motion on that?
Need a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, we're done?
Nope.
All right, just making sure.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just asking if we're done.
Well, we are as soon as we vote.
Okay.
Okay, no other discussion? All in favor, right hand? Unanimous approval then to move forward with resolution 2020-22, which is approving our loans to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and moving forward.
Thanks for what you do, by the way.
And saving a quarter of a million dollars. Very good. That being the last item on our agenda for Public Works, we are adjourned. And I'll call to order our city council meeting of December 1st. We have, second item on the agenda is the consent agenda items A, B, and C. A is the approval of the minutes of special city council workshop held on November 10th. B is the approval of the minutes of special city council meeting held November 10th. And C is the approval of the 2021 calendar year scheduled regular meetings, which we've already discussed. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
They're moved.
Moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All same sign. Unanimous approval then to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three is discussion possible action to approve resolution 2020-20 revising the Guthrie Public Library general policy and fee schedule. And we have our illustrious head librarian right here to talk about it. Good.
So within the last 12 months, the Guthrie Public Library received a grant to allow individuals with different abilities, specifically those that have visual challenges, to have access to public computers. So that means that we now have public computers that talk.
Nice.
Cool.
Well, our policy, current policy does not accommodate for that, meaning it does not have language that ensures basically that we are ADA compliant. And so the request this evening is that the verbiage provided with the agenda item cover letter be approved, which specifically addresses being ADA compliant because of those computers.
And what is, are you talking about headphones and stuff, or what?
They do have headphones, but they actually talk, meaning...
I know that.
I'm sorry?
The computer talks.
Correct.
But it could be wired to headphones so that there still remain a quiet level in the library.
Correct.
So what are you, what are you talking about when you say ADA compliant? What do we need to do?
Meaning that even with, prior to having those computers installed, our policy did not include ADA verbiage, saying that we will make necessary accommodations for any human being within reason.
So, so this change in policy really didn't have anything to do with the computers talking?
It, it did and it didn't. And once those computers were installed, we stepped back and looked and realized, hmm, this is an opportunity to be more inviting and to have documentation to support it.
The, the language in the policy is just catching up with the physical assets we have at the library.
Right. Because, because you've been ADA compliant for a while.
Correct, but our policy didn't say that.
Gotcha.
It's a maintenance thing.
Gotcha, okay. And that's on page 200, if you're looking on your iPads. Okay?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All same sign. Unanimous approval then to approve that resolution 2020-20.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item number four, discussion possible action to approve resolution 2020-21, strongly encourage the use of masks and other protective measures, and pledge support of those property owners and businesses who require the use of masks in the city of Guthrie. I have, I have got some information, just kind of to set the stage a little bit. I thought they were going to show it on the screen, but just some information.
There you go, Steve.
There it comes. Okay. On the most current data that we have, first, the trending data on the positive COVID cases in Guthrie, and this is all, this is all, this isn't, this isn't on your, on your iPad. This is, this is all data from the State Department of Health, and I just wanted to show the trend that we have with the specific numbers. So July 10th, we had 52 positives. A month later, we had 115. A month after that, 176. In October, we had 256. In November, we jumped all the way to 565, and then it should be December 1st, obviously, not December 2nd. But December 1st, the data that was collected today, again, in the State Department of Health, we jumped almost 400 cases in that less than 30-day period to 938. Just to kind of compare us with some other communities that are about the same size, our Elk City had 793, Newcastle 612, Oak Mulgy 718, and Weatherford 790, and we're sitting at 938. So not only is our trend significantly jumping, which was predicted by many of the experts, but we're also, per thousand population, we're running significantly higher than some of the other communities about our same size in Oklahoma. So I say all of that to also introduce the latest CDC announcement concerning the wearing of masks, and I did share this with all of the members of the council, as well as the total website URL that this is quoted from. But the CDC on November 20th said that wearing of the mask is an effective way to reduce the transmission of the virus, and also added that the masks, it's been determined now by the scientists that the masks help the wearer as well as those in proximity to the wearer. Initially, it was for the people other than the mask wearer, and now they're saying that there is also merit to the mask wearer. That particular announcement referenced seven different studies that confirmed the benefit of the masking, although in total, there were some 43 printed studies that were included in that CDC website. But the seven studies included one entire hospital system, a city in Germany, 15 different studies that have gone on in different states around our United States, a study in Canada, and then a compilation of, of data acquired from over 200 countries. So a lot of scientific data supporting the movement towards wearing the mask and how effective it is in minimizing the spread of the, of the virus. So the resolution that, that I proposed to you, the council, we have, I believe that we have sent some, some mixed, missed, mixed messages to the constituency, to our citizens. We were one of the first cities to, in fact, adopt a mandatory mask resolution, and that was seen as, by, by some, as very positive, by others not. But after adopting the, being one of the first to adopt the mandatory mask resolution, we voted six to one against extending that resolution. So there was somewhat of a mixed message there. We have also, I believe there's been one member of our council that has made reference to wearing the mask, and six members of the council during official council business, and six members that have yet to speak on that, on that particular issue. I think this resolution reinforces the importance that we all think, all the council thinks about wearing a mask. It's not, it's not saying it's mandatory, it's saying it's highly recommended that citizens wear the mask when the social distancing is, is compromised, or they think it's going to be compromised. The other thing that the resolution does is reinforce the support that the city via the police force would give to businesses that want to make a statement concerning the wearing of masks to customers as well as employees, employees that work in that business and customers that visit that business. So those are the two things that I think are achievable and desirous in this, in proposing this resolution. I think it, I think it sends a positive message. Anything that we can do to stop, to slow down that trend, I think is a positive thing. That trend and those numbers alone for Guthrie, as well as comparing ourselves to other, other communities, is kind of scary. So I, I place that in front of you, and I hope that you will agree with me and, and support that resolution.
Well, I'd like to jump in real quick because we did, we were one of the first, if not the first, to mandate the mask. And we did. And we mandated it for 30 days. I don't think that was sending a mixed message by not remandating it. The reason we mandated it for 30 days and were the first to do it was so that you and I and everybody else would get it, okay? That it is important. I don't like wearing the mask, but I wear it. I wear it everywhere. I don't wear it in my car. I wear it in the stores, I wear it in Walmart, gas station, wherever else I'm going. I wear it, okay? It's not a favorite thing of mine, but I do it. And I support people that do wear it. I don't want to, I don't want to give you anything that I might have, that I don't know I have with this whole COVID thing. But there's more to this resolution than kind of meets the eye, and that is, we already have an administrative policy in place for police. If you're in your building or in your facility and you say, Brian, you can't come in without a mask, and I say, yes, I can, I'm in here without my mask. Well, you need to leave. No, I don't. I don't have to go. This is a free country. No, this is my store, you need to get out. And if I do not get out, you can call 282-3535, and they will come and remove me. Okay? It's called trespassing. Okay, they will remove me. You start putting a, a resolution tying it to a mask, that's totally different than, the same scenario happens, I'm in the same store and I'm abusing the little old man over there. Or, and again, I'm getting, talking kind of crazy on that, or I'm, you know, cussing out the place because they don't have what I want, okay? And they want me out of the store, and I'm not leaving. It's not about a mask at that point. They can call 282-3535. That's 282-3535.
And they could do that.
Get the police, and the police will come escort that person out. Okay? Period. Okay? You start tying a trespass to a mask, that's a whole new ballgame.
Well, I don't think it really does, Brian.
That does, ties a trespass to a mask. You're, you're making a resolution based on a mask.
All it says is pledging support to those property.
To the police.
To those property owners.
Not just to the property owner. The, but the property owners already have the support of our city hall and our police department.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but it's not tying anything.
Read the rest of the resolution. The resolution ties, and ties this mask to a trespass, okay, to where the owner is now calling because you're trespassing on their property. Well, they can call anyway.
No, there's, there's no, trespass isn't even in the resolution.
Billy?
Yes.
But that's what, it's not in the resolution, but that's what it comes down to. Let Leroy comment on it.
That's the authority.
Or Billy.
Police to go.
Well, I think, I think it's hand in hand, it's pledging support to the community, to the stores, to the police department. It's the same thing, we're not crossing the line, we're not mandating the mask, but we're making it highly, we're highly encouraging it. It is the same thing. We're not mandating that a store calls the police, we're not mandating that the police take action, but we're pledging support to the individual stores. If they want to make that policy, we're not making the policy, but if they want to make that policy, we will support them in enforcing that.
That support's already there, Billy.
I agree.
Okay, so why do we have to, why do we have to vote on that support that's already there?
And that's why this is a resolution and not an ordinance.
Right.
It's not an ordinance mandating anything, it's just pledging support.
I think it just reinforces to the public, to the business owner on this, on this point, to the public in terms of wearing the mask, it just reinforces how, how strongly we feel that we need to take steps as a community and as individuals and as a council to try to change, reduce that trend.
Okay, so, so let's talk, let's talk about this. Because personally, you say, you know, council, there's only one person on council that's talked about the use of a mask, which is you.
That's true.
Okay, so now I'm talking about the use of a mask.
Correct.
Okay, I've seen other council people out there, I've seen Don Channel out there, I've seen myself out there, and we all wear masks.
I, I.
Okay, and because, so we all support the mask. We support the choice that we make to wear the mask to prevent you from getting sick on anything that I might have.
I, I understand that.
So anything short, anything more than that is, is, is a quasi mandate.
Well, I, I think, I think...
If you want to show your, let me finish. If you want to show your support, show your support.
Well, I wear the mask.
Wear your mask.
I wear the mask.
So do, so do I.
But what, what better way to show the support?
Than make a resolution?
Just a minute, let me finish.
Why, I wasn't done.
What better way than for this city council to unanimously say, we support wearing the mask, we highly recommend you wearing the mask? And you, business owner, if you want to say in your, in your business that you require a mask to come in, and somebody comes in and gives you a bad time about it, we have your back. We, this city, have your back, and, and that is your right to do that. What better way to do that?
Okay, I get that, and I, and I agree with supporting wearing the mask, not mandating, but recommending.
No.
I agree with that.
It doesn't say no.
But Leroy, are we supporting the end user or the customer at this point with our police force in the enforcement of what they're mandating in their shop?
Administratively, we're already providing the support that this... Administratively, we're already providing the support that this resolution is. All this resolution is doing, it's not changing anything. It's just the city council recognizing that and endorsing what we're already doing administratively.
And I, and I think that is a great message to send.
So moved.
A great message to send.
And I, just for information, I've shared this resolution with at least 10 other communities in the last, well, since we, since I got it last week, that they're looking at something like this instead of an ordinance.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want, the further thing I'm going to say is I support wearing a mask 100%, okay? And, but I won't be voting for a resolution that's already administratively in place, period.
Isn't that what this is, though?
That's already in place.
This is just us saying that we agree with what we're already administrating.
It goes more than that.
That's right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand for the resolution. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to two. I'm sorry, four to two. Forgot to count myself.
You didn't raise your hand?
I did, okay. Motion carries four to two. Congratulations to the citizens. Thank you. Okay, consider taking action on Resolution 2020-23, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of the promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. Kim, are you doing that one, or?
It's basically the same thing.
We've already made the presentation.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion other than it's been a really good deal for the citizens of Guthrie? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to move forward with Resolution 2020-23. Item number six, discussion and possible action to waive the electrical permit fee for restoring services related to the October ice storm. This was brought by Councilman Case, Vice Mayor Case. You want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, I will. I think actually what we did here was, and the only reason that this, I'm being an electrician, being a contractor, big in this trade, I know that the cities that I did work in, which is Norman, Moore, Oklahoma City, Yukon, El Reno, Edmond, Guthrie, this is the only jurisdiction where I had to pay a permit fee. Everybody else just said, "Go do it. We've got a massive amount of electricity out. We've got to get these people back online," and that's what their focus was. And we went a different direction with it. And though I like the fact, Dan, are you still there?
Okay.
Though I like the fact that Mike did what he did, the permit fee thing was, nobody knew what to do. Nobody told us we were going to charge a permit fee when everybody else wasn't. We were kind of left in limbo. Mike didn't say, "We'll settle up later until the end of the first weekend." That's when I found out that we had permit fees that we were going to have to deal with, and that's when I started charging them. So, I've got a bunch of people that I'm going to have to pay permit fees for that I didn't, that I didn't charge them for. And I know other contractors are the same way, and that's why it was an issue. But because we have already gone down this road and where we're at right now, there's no way to back up. There's not a reverse on this. There's no way, I mean, that is going to require us as a city to somehow impose on the contractors that they pay back the fees to the customers if we, if we reverse it now, and vice versa on the other side of that.
So, what are you asking for?
I don't know how to fix this at this point. So, as far as I'm concerned, we could take this off the agenda. It's not going to work. There's no way to fix it. It was on the agenda, and we were going to try to handle it before we came to council, but we couldn't do it with this particular topic for some reason. We've done it with others, but not this one. So, we had to bring it to council. It could have been handled a long time ago, but it didn't get handled. And so, that's why it's an issue. But, like I said, at this point, there's nothing we can do about it, so take it off the agenda.
Well, why are we charging permits for disastrous type scenarios? Just out of curiosity, it doesn't affect me, but I want to know.
One of the things that, and this wasn't just a decision of Mike and Bill as building inspectors. This decision was a collective decision of myself, Dan, and the building inspectors. And at the time that we.
I have, Mike did nothing wrong. I'm not mad at Mike at all. I'm not mad at Dan either. I'm not mad at anybody.
I understand. I'm just trying to give some background information of how we got there. At the time that we made our decision, it was our understanding that there were other communities that was requiring a permit and an inspection. For example, we looked at City Edmond, and what they put out in their initial news releases was electrical equipment repair. If you have had a tree limb fall on or damage your overhead service line, you may need to repair the weatherhead or meter base before Edmond Electric can restore service. If the weatherhead either is leaning, pulled from the meter base or otherwise damaged, or the meter base has been pulled loose from the wall or otherwise damaged, a qualified electrician will need to make all necessary repairs before service can be restored. The electrician will need to obtain an electrical permit from the Building and Forest Service Department. So, our initial check, there were other cities requiring permits. That may have changed, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, that you didn't pay it in other cities, but we based it on what came out initially from the cities saying they were required. When we looked at it, we have an ordinance that requires that permit and that inspection and that fee. We didn't think as staff, we had the authority to waive something that is set by the city council by ordinance. And then, our concern was also if we waived it, were we creating a liability for the city if we didn't do the inspection and something went wrong? Was that a liability issue? So, those are some of the things that we went into our process. We're not against waiving a fee. If the city council wants to do that, and we'd addressed it at the beginning, wouldn't be a problem. Going back and addressing it on the backside is more complicated.
There's no solving this issue.
But, but anyway, that's kind of where staff was coming from on why we initially, based on our research, other cities were doing it. Our ordinance required it. We did to expedite it. We provided OG&E and all of the known electrical contractors that worked in the city of Guthrie in the past a phone call, explaining our process. We give them the cell phone numbers of our inspectors. We approved overtime for our inspectors to work weekends and Saturdays so that we didn't hold up. We thought we communicated that we would settle up at the end. We would do the paperwork and the fees at the end, but we would go ahead and do the inspection so people could get their electric on. Maybe we didn't communicate that as clearly as we should have, but that was the purpose that we made the calls to everybody to say, "Hey, here's our process."
Thank you, Leroy.
So, is there, is there something that we can change in the process so that if this happens again, we can get in front of this?
You can amend the ordinance to give additional authority to staff to make changes.
In time of disaster.
In time of a disaster where the city manager has more authority to make some modifications during the time that the mayor has declared a natural disaster.
Do we need to come up with the language for that now? Can we rely on Billy to do that?
I would recommend that Billy and I work on some language that would grant the city manager the authority under emergency situations, but, you know, limit that authority so it doesn't give city manager point, you know, cart block.
Yeah.
So, I would be.
Leroy just bought a new car. What happened? He didn't have four-wheel drive.
I'd like to see that done, but I don't think I can make a motion on it based on the suggestion.
We will, if you all would like, I will work with city attorney to draft some language that during the time that the city council, the mayor has declared a disaster, there are some areas where the city manager has authority to waive fees or processes to expedite recovery.
I think that would be acceptable to the council. Any other questions? Okay?
Do you need us to tell you in majority that you want us to do that?
No, I think I've seen enough heads nod. We will draft something and get it before you for consideration.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Then we move on to item number seven, discussion, possible action on a potential emergency solutions grant application. Again, Vice Mayor Case asked us to be on the agenda. You want to take the lead in that discussion?
Well, I recently got on the board of Hope House. And so, consequently, I started investigating what areas of revenue or funding I could find. And, of course, with all the COVID money, I started there first. And kind of what I found out was that COVID didn't have enough money to take care of the homeless stuff, so they shipped it to HUD. And HUD did the ESG program, which I cannot remember what the, emergency solution. Grant. But it's granted to cities or to municipalities of some sort, states even, and then they can grant it out to, or give it, rather, to 501(c)(3)'s that are dealing with homelessness. And I thought, well, you know, if we can help to solidify the homeless shelter that where, I mean, right now, they're month to month trying to find out how they're going to pay their bills to keep these guys in a house and food. And I'm just trying to find a way to help them out, and this doesn't cost a city a thing.
Are you talking about the $22 million or so that just got earmarked from the state?
No, I'm talking about the ESG. That's a different deal altogether.
But that's out right now for the homeless.
The CARES Act money that's come, that's a different thing altogether. That's not the HUD ESG program. Though it's something we could still look into, the HUD ESG program is a separate program from what Leroy sent me the emails on. If I, if I understand that properly.
There's, there's a lot of different pockets of CARES Act money and for different purposes. And there was CARES Act money, and there's also a annual program to fund the emergency solution grants. HUD normally provides funding direct to entitlement cities, which are typically communities 50,000 in population or more entitled. Funding for HUD that goes to smaller communities like us is normally given to the state Oklahoma Department of Commerce, and then they administer it and distribute it to the smaller cities. So, when Councilman Case approached me about this last week, it was Wednesday before I got to start out with the holiday, I did track down and talk to Rebecca Son, who is the Emergency Solution Grant Technical Assistance Person for the Department of Commerce. She indicated to me there is another round of applications for this funding in January. And I told her, you know, I talked to her on Wednesday afternoon, and Thursday was the holiday. I said, "You know, I appreciate you taking my call. We'll call back next week and set up an appointment to get into it in more detail." But for the Hope House to benefit from this, it's like a lot of things, you have to have history in order to apply for things to direct. To become an entity, to receive funds from United Way, I think you've got to have three years of history.
Right.
Same thing with this grant program. To be a direct applicant to Department of Commerce, you have to have at least one year of history where you've administered one of these grants. If you don't have that one year of history, then you have to have a sponsor entity sponsor your application. So, for them to be eligible to apply, it would either be the city or the Community Action Agency for our area could also be the sponsor. But somebody will have to sponsor them in order to make the application. So, if you all want to pursue this, then we would need to partner with whoever's the lead administrator for Hope House and make a phone call and set up a meeting with the individual from Department of Commerce to make sure we know the deadlines, the application process. And then we would need to, there's one, and something you could do tonight, is agree for us to sponsor a emergency solution grant on behalf of Hope House. Then we would have to actually write the application, so somebody will have to sit down and draft and submit the application. There is also an agreement between the shelter and the city that would have to be developed. And then, in grant administration, the money would come to the city because we're the sponsor. And then, it would be our responsibility to review invoices from Hope House. And as long as they follow the regulations and procedures of HUD for this grant program, then we could reimburse those invoices out of that funding that we received. So, that's kind of a synopsis, a real quick synopsis of the program.
So, how does the CARES Act money that I just heard about the other day, maybe it was yesterday, I think, that just got approved and funded into Oklahoma and is going to start filtering to the communities for homeless, all different levels, from hotel bills to homeless shelters, to food, to everything in between? How does that affect? If we were to take advantage of something like that, does that affect this grant?
It may provide additional funding through this source.
But it doesn't affect this grant?
It could be, because there is a regular grant application, just like there's regular CDBG.
Right.
Everything now has supplemental money through the CARES Act. And I don't know the specifics of the program that you're talking about, but more than likely.
You'll see it just came out.
Money that comes out that goes to larger cities, goes direct to them through HUD. Smaller cities, we have to apply through Department of Commerce to access those funds. So, it probably will be money the state supplements this program with additional dollars out of CARES Act dollars in addition to the regular funding they receive for this program.
Sounded like they, and I didn't read a whole lot into it, but it sounded like they were going to give it direct to the cities, but, or the cities were going to apply for it.
Typically, just like when the CARES Act money came out for municipalities. And we got our share of it when the Congress awarded the CARES Act money initially to municipalities and states. Any municipality or county that had more than 500,000 population, they give the money direct to those cities and counties. The money for the balance of the state went to the state government, and they distributed it to the smaller towns. The roughly 900,000 we got reimbursed for our operating expenses, we applied through the governor's office under the state to get our share. So, the process depends on what size city you are, on whether you go direct to HUD or whether you go through the state to act just the money.
And that may be how this is. It had a whole list of what you could use it for, a big, long list of what you could use it for. Like I said, it just came out. I'm going to, if it's okay, I'm going to make a motion to sponsor the Hope House.
Before we go there, Neighborhood Solutions may well qualify for some of this money as well for helping prevent homelessness, to keep people in their homes and maintain their homes.
That's up to them to go for it, not the city, though.
Well, no, they have to be sponsored too, just like the Hope House does.
That's what you're going to get into.
That's what I'm saying, is that's the only.
That's a rabbit hole.
Okay, well, then, stay with the Hope House.
The Charlel Warner Grant.
That's fine.
The Council on Aging, all these others.
I was just, if there's, if the money's available and we can help the entire community with it, I don't see a problem there.
Well, I think that's why I bring up the CARES Act money, because, and we might want to investigate that before we even jump off on this potentially. That's why I was asking if it would affect it in any way, but I see what Don's talking about. I don't know that we want to start going down a rabbit hole with it.
I agree with both of you. I understand what you're saying.
We're sponsoring everybody on everything because we just can't afford to do that.
And we can't sit here and go, well, we like Hope House, but the rest of you, we don't. Yeah, and we'll have people hired just to write checks and look at the paperwork for all the other people we sponsor is the bad part of that deal.
So.
So, so where, do we, do we have a motion to direct the city to work with the?
I was making a motion, but then all of a sudden, there was other entities popping up during the, before I even hardly got the motion out of my mouth.
With you about that originally, is that the fact that it could actually help a couple of different places here in town that are doing the homelessness thing. That's all we're talking about, is homelessness.
Yeah.
We're not talking about.
Trust me, I get that.
Aging or anything.
But, but. Right, but the drawback to that is, the aging people, you know, the Council on Aging, they're going to say, we'll owe your interest in as a homeless. What about the old folks? You should write our grant too. You should administer our grant.
But I think one of the differences that I, that I understand anyway is that, like Council on Aging, they do have a history. And Neighborhood Solutions does have a history of three, three or four years, whatever the criteria is, that they can sponsor themselves.
That's what I was saying. You said they can.
But the Hope House doesn't have that, because I ran into that with the United Way. They don't have three years' experience to show, in this case, United Way, I don't want to get us off on target here, but they don't have three years' experience to be their own host or sponsor. So they look for, in this case, they're looking for the city.
But Hope House is not just a Guthrie thing. Hope House is a big organization. And they should, they should, they should be, don't they have sponsors within their organization? They're not just in Guthrie.
Yes, they are.
Are they just Guthrie? Because my understanding, they're in Oklahoma City, too.
This is a private one, I think.
They all use the same name? Cheryl, go ahead.
I was just going to say in response to Don, respectfully, I think that if we can hope or help one entity or two, it's better than not being able to help any at all because we're afraid too many will ask. I mean, if we have money available, we should take advantage of it for the good that some of these are actually doing.
But it also obligates you pretty much, you have to stand up for everybody else, too.
All right, can.
Depends on how they're funded now anyway, or what they've, who they've got that can write grants for them. Not everybody is in that position.
Right, but anybody that comes and asks, are you going to go, well, we like Hope House, but we don't like you guys?
I don't look at it that way. I'm sorry. I just, I feel like helping. If no one asks, then you wait for someone to ask, in my opinion, but help as many as you can rather than not helping at all.
So Cheryl, on that note, and again, I'm all about, I'll get the shirt off my back to help anybody. And I will, okay? But my point is, does the Hope House not have someone within their organization that can sponsor them? And you guys are sitting here telling me it's only Guthrie, and it is not. They're everywhere.
But.
Everywhere. They've got national chapters.
Neighborhood Hope House. There's Shawnee's and Guthrie's.
There's a Hope House Oklahoma City, Hope House Guthrie, Shawnee, Stillwater, Hennepin.
They're in each house in every town, too. I don't know, but I don't think there's.
But then they go to, they've got, they've got huge, there's big organizations behind all of that.
Brian Solvett, Jim is on the board. Let him find out if it's really Neighborhood Hope House, which is what the legal name is, and if they're standing alone, or are they a part of a bigger organization? That's how you find out.
I think, was not the question is whether the city would like to be a sponsor, host for this application because they couldn't, the Hope House couldn't apply because they didn't have the three years or whatever it is of experience. Is that the basic issue?
You're all making good points, and you're all correct. I mean, Councilman Chan.
You can always table until we get more facts.
Well, we can. And what Leroy brings up, Steve, is the fact that he brought this, he pushed this entity towards Jim when Jim asked the question, okay, on funding, okay? And it stops right there that Hope House is only in Guthrie, and that's just inaccurate, okay? It's not accurate.
Let me find out. I've just asked a question.
And that's nothing bad. I commend everything you're doing, and I'll help however I can. But they may have a chapter that can sponsor this, is all I'm saying.
So is there more other information? Is there, right now, what I'm hearing is that we were headed towards tabling this. Until we get more information, number one, is there other organizations within the Hope House umbrella that could host or sponsor the Guthrie Hope House?
That's what I'm asking. That's the question I'm asking. But I'm also asking staff to really explore this new money potentially that's out there specifically and only earmarked for homelessness. It's earmarked for the people that lost their jobs, their homes, all of it, and all the above. And it's just got released.
I'd have to ask why United Way thinks they've been in business for less than a year if they're part of a larger organization. And United Way should surely know that.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it just doesn't make sense.
I know that's why they cannot, at the present time, they're not a United Way partner because they don't have three years' experience of showing.
But if they were part of a larger organization, then you would think they would be. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
If it is agreeable to city council, city staff would spend some time with the administrator of Hope House, Councilman Case, and whoever else, and do some more exploratory, because we just got started on this last Wednesday.
Right.
We'd be glad to spend a little more time to do a little more exploratory to see what funding is actually available, when the applications are due, how they can access this money, and whether we have to be a sponsor or not, and what that means. And clearly, if we are a sponsor, we are going to commit some time because in order to review their invoices, we would have to know the program in order to sign off on them. So maybe by the 15th, we can come back with more detailed information than what I could get.
That'd be great. And if they have some kind of national affiliation within Hope House, that might be a quicker and better means for them to get the money anyway than the city of Guthrie.
It would keep us from getting outside of our traditional lane and taking on more responsibility.
Well, they may already have these grants in works, is what I'm saying.
And one thing I do want to note, though, on that ESG program, I think it allows like 7.5% of what you're getting for administrative stuff, to take care, for the city to pay for that person to do all that administrative stuff.
Correct.
Okay, so item number seven is tabled for more information concerning how the Hope House qualifies for the grant and the real need for a host or support from the city.
We'll try to visit with Mr. Case tomorrow and see who needs to participate and try to set up some meetings to get more detailed information.
Thank you, Leroy. I appreciate it.
Call him, Mr., not me.
That'd take longer than Dan's.
We got to, we got to move right along on that one.
What did you want to do?
There you go.
You want to hit that one up, Dan?
We're not the channel. Okay, item number eight, discussion, possible action to approve responses to the October 2020 ice storm, inclusive of a number of things. Leroy, are you taking the lead or is Tenny?
I am, and it may be a joint presentation from myself and Tenny, Metro Public Works Director. Tenny may have some more recent information than what I have because he puts it together every day. Just kind of a rundown, the potential 75% FEMA cost reimbursement. The federal disaster declaration has not been approved to date. I checked this afternoon. It's my understanding it's on the president's office or has been submitted to the president's office for consideration and signature, but he has not signed it yet. But everybody is pretty confident that it will happen. On the temporary storm debris collection site at the Guthrie Convenience Center, DEQ did approve our temporary staging site. The debris disposal deadline for this event is 90 days unless we get it. A variance extending that, which we should be able to do if we need it. The permit request to open burn the storm debris without an air curtain incinerator was denied. And that's partly an EPA process. We were lumped into, because of the county we're in, and we're in the Oklahoma City standard metropolitan area, there are ozone and those type of regulations. We're in that district. If we were one county over, say, Pangay, Cushing got approved for open burning because they're not in that area. If we were in Perry, but because we're in the standard metropolitan statistic area, we get drawled into the same regulations as Oklahoma City. And that's why it got denied. They did approve the location for an air curtain incinerator or as a location to chip the debris. We currently are leasing an air curtain burner from Hair Rental out of Stillwater. I may not be pronouncing that right, for $4,500 a month with the option to buy. So if we use it for three months or four months, whatever lease we pay will go towards the purchase price if we decide to buy. Nice thing about it, if we're leasing it, that's eligible for reimbursement. If we purchase it, it may not be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So if we rent it for four months and get FEMA reimbursement, that could go towards the purchase of it.
How's that working? Have we tried it?
Tenny can give a more detailed report, but my understanding, Tenny has been very satisfied with the process. We have, at the convenience center by private residence, we collect, or they've brought about 6,000 cubic yards to the collection site. City crews from our parks and other facilities, we took about 4,000 cubic yards. At this point, we've got about 70% of that brush burnt using the air curtain burner. I don't know if you had a chance, Tenny, to calculate what it's costing us a cubic yard to burn it?
Currently, we've only operated the machine four days. And out of them days, it's a 60-gallon fuel tank. We've had to fill it up one time. I've tried to put some real rough numbers together just before the meeting here. We're at about 62 cents a yard right now for burning what debris we've burnt, and we've probably burnt roughly 70% of everything that's out there. We're anticipating to have everything gone by the end of this week.
So it's a quick process.
It is. It's a fairly quick process. There's a little bit of work and effort that goes into it. You have to prepare a site, dig a specific specification on as far as the depth of the hole, the width, the length, so that it, and then you fill that up with the debris and the air curtain blows over the top of it. You have to keep it down 12 inches below that height of the air curtain, and it just sets there.
So it's an open burn with an air curtain, with a curtain of air blowing over it?
It does, and for the most part, what we've experienced, there's very, very little smoke, zero ambusher coming off of it. It just gets it that much more hotter with the air blowing over it that it burns it up. And it's burning up all the larger logs and stuff that I had spoke with some towns that have them. One of our county districts have one. They've had some issues. That was some of the cons behind some of it was it didn't burn all of the large stuff up. We haven't had that issue with this one.
Good deal.
One thing, when I get through with my report, I understand there may be some interest in discussing. Right now, our collection site is limited to residential solid waste utility customers. It is not open to business churches or apartment complexes. I believe there's some interest in discussing that at the end. Let me go ahead and talk about curbside pickup, and then we can come back to that discussion. On the curbside storm debris pickup, utilizing city crews, just to give you some, oh, to back up a minute, Tenny said 62 cents per cubic yard. If we were to use a tub grinder to grind it, the bid that Edmund received was $1.67. So you could compare those two costs. But on November 12th, we hauled about 1,400 cubic yards of storm debris by city crews from cottonwood flats to the collection site. If you just estimate 100,000 cubic yards for all the residences, and that's just a wild estimate based on windshield driving. But if you look at that figure at 1,400 cubic yards a day, it would take us about 71 working days to pick it up if we use just city crews. That's pretty consistent. Other cities are saying that it's going to be, you know, late February, March, before they get done. So everybody's anticipating. Our expenses to use city crews, when you look at equipment costs, fuel costs, man hours, both regular and overtime, is about $5 a cubic yard. If we picked up 100,000 at that rate, it'd be 500,000. If we get FEMA reimbursement, we would get 375,000 back of our expenses. If we do this ourselves, we would recommend that we use the roughly 300,000 to 400,000 of FEMA reimbursement to replace some of our equipment because some of it's already dated, and then we're, of course, wearing it out more responding to this. As in comparison, the city of the village contracted for a curbside pickup at $7.75 per cubic yard, whereas it's costing us in-house about $5. If we were to contract somebody at that rate for 100,000 cubic yards, and we got FEMA reimbursement, we would still be out 25% of that cost, or roughly $200,000 that we would be out, that wouldn't be matched. The other issue is, of course, finding somebody that's even available to start right away. So our recommendation is that we start the residential curbside pickup utilizing city staff this next Monday on December 7th, utilizing our crew, and then we reevaluate it on December 15th at our next meeting. In each meeting, we can give you updates and reevaluate. But right now, we think that it's something that can be done in-house, and we can probably give a similar response time that the other cities are projecting to get it done. Again, current policy, the free curbside pickup was being limited to residential properties, and that curbside pickup was not available to business churches or apartment complex. Again, there's some interest in discussing that. I would point out, as we try to work with city council to establish on who we did it for. on who we did it for and who we didn't, um, Oklahoma City, uh, their news release was on October twenty-eighth, City of Norman, theirs was on October thirtieth, Ponca City did one on eleven-twelve, and Edmund on ten-twenty-eight. And all of those cities were identical to what we adopted. It was limited to residential and was not made available, the curbside pickup, free curbside pickup to churches and businesses. Um, if for some reason we decide to provide curbside pickup or dumping, uh, at the temporary collection site, um, one, uh, everybody will still need to remember, we can't go on private property, even if we provide the curbside pickup. They have to bring it to the curb. We can't go on private property. And then secondly, if we decide to go for it on starting next Monday, and say we add churches, uh, because that was one of the discussions, uh, then we'd have to deal with how we go handle churches that already taken care of theirs. Are we going to reimburse them? Uh, uh, how that would be handled? If they've already taken it and disposed at the service center and paid that fee, well, that fee is really a pass-through that we pay Waste Connection. So if we reimburse that fee, we're out that, because we can't get that back for them paying to use the, the roll-offs, uh, to dispose of it. So that's kind of where we're at. Our recommendation is to keep moving forward with the, uh, uh, the air curtain incinerator to, uh, uh, dispose of it. Uh, and that we use city crews starting next Monday for the, uh, curbside pickup for residential, and then it will be your all's decision whether we extend that curbside pickup or the free dump site to others in addition to residential properties.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it as you have it, and, uh, that's what I'm gonna do.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move forward with the plan just as it was presented by, uh, city manager. Uh, any other discussion?
Tenny's got a discussion.
Tenny, you wanna comment?
I just, yeah, comment. Um, I'd like to just say and share a little bit more information. Um, get to my notes here. Uh, I think it's important that we, we do note that we've had, uh, roughly six hundred and thirty-eight, if not a rough number. We've had six hundred and thirty-eight customers that have utilized the site. I think that, uh, speaks highly of them, uh, wanna send a big thank you out to the ones that have utilized that site for the free drop-off. Um, Leroy shared some of the cubic yard numbers, uh, as well, but, um, also to encourage that, that site's still there for that use for, for the free drop-off as well, so we can continue that. And then also, something just to think about is that we haven't really put in the picture, is the amount of brush that, that residents has used contractors to come and remove as well. Um, so I think some of the numbers that we have originally started with have, have went drown, went down quite a bit, so, so, um, just a few things there that I wanted to share as well, especially a big thanks to the ones that's using the drop-off site.
Well, but the good news is, if we get FEMA reimbursement, then we can, three hundred and seventy-five grand, four hundred grand, three hundred grand, goes a long way in getting some new gear for these boys and girls.
And our city staff has been very diligent of figuring out ways to use, uh, um, reimbursement from projects like this to further replacing some of our worn-out, outdated equipment. And so it's been a benefit to us doing it that way. Uh, and, uh, not to jump ahead, but we are going, with the CARESAC money that we were reimbursed for our expenses, we're gonna bring it to you in the next couple of meetings to purchase some equipment. And we're, it looks like we're gonna be able to use that CARESAC money to match another grant, so that we get thirty-five percent additional paid for by the grant, and use the sixty-five percent of CARESAC money to match that grant. So we're kind of doubling up on, on that. So, uh, city staff has been pretty creative and resourceful in trying to utilize resources that we have, the city, to make it go further.
Congratulations on leveraging those resources. So we have a motion and a second to move forward with the plan as presented by the city manager, both curbside pickup, as well as, uh, at the convenience center, uh, and, uh, and to do it with city staff, uh, starting, uh, this coming Monday. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval, then, to move forward with the plan as presented by Leroy. Um, item number nine, city manager.
I have no additional reports tonight.
Okay, uh, ten is, uh, comments by the city council. Councilman Channel.
Um, well, we just, just left this subject, but the guys are gonna start picking it up. But I've noticed a lot while I was driving around through town that, you know, just because you pile it up next to your porch or whatever, the guys aren't gonna come and get it. You need to get it out next to the curb, not in the street, but next to the curb. They can't come on your property. They can reach in there and grab the piles. But this, leading up to this next week, it'd be a good time to do that, because I see some, you know, some of you, the way your piles are, you're gonna be real disappointed when the crews go by, and you're gonna be saying, why didn't they get mine? Well, you didn't work hard enough at it. Some of you need to work hard. Uh, the other thing, all this fun we've had up here tonight, if you want in on some of it, next week, you can go sign up to run and get one of these chairs. And if you win, you can also find out what we do back in the secret room when we all leave, so. If you want in on that, go sign up and come and help us.
Leroy?
Mr. Channel made a good point, uh, and we will reinforce that. We will issue a news release tomorrow, going over a lot of those same things, so, uh, those are all good points. And we'll try to reinforce that with the news release that we'll send out in the morning.
Vice Mayor Case?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Councilman Bothrowe?
Um, just, everybody's done a lot of work here lately during the storm damage, and, and, uh, I just wanna reiterate what Don's saying is, on the December seventh, eighth, and ninth is your days to sign up for one of these chairs. That's it.
Councilman Taylor?
Nothing to say. Thank you, staff.
Councilwoman Paget?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, I, I've got a couple things. I, I think, uh, something passed us by, uh, when we had, when we exercised one of the significant rights that we have, and that's the right to vote. Uh, I'd like to publicly thank all those volunteers that handled, uh, those voting, uh, places. Uh, I mean, here they were with, dealing with an ice storm, dealing with, in some cases, no power, uh, all kinds of things that were happening uh, at the, uh, early election voting, or early voting, as well as the regular voting, and, um, from all indications, it went off pretty, pretty darn smoothly. So lots of time and effort by those, those volunteers that, uh, probably go on, certainly go unnamed, and certainly go sometimes, uh, unthanked, and I'd like to thank them on behalf of the city, uh, and the council. Um, again, uh, first responders, healthcare workers, our, our police force, our fire department, EMS, uh, through the COVID thing, just doing fantastic job uh, in very, very difficult circumstances. So, uh, thank you, appreciate all of your efforts, uh, and, um, we, we just, uh, can't say enough, at all levels, uh, certainly. Uh, this Saturday, we got lots of things going on in town. Uh, we've got, uh, the, uh, traditional lighting of the, uh, of the Christmas tree, which is gonna take place at Honor Park. Uh, that's gonna be a virtual, uh, people can view it virtually, I think, on the, uh, Historic Christmas Facebook page, Territorial Christmas Facebook page. I'm probably messing that up. Um, but, uh, look, uh, look at, at, at the Territorial Christmas website. Uh, I believe we'll, we'll be carrying it. Um, also, we've got Kiwanis right here in this room doing their auction on, also, on the fifth, on Saturday. Uh, and, uh, also, just let me throw out a, a tidbit, that the American Legion Auxiliary, uh, the women are, are collecting coats for kids. Uh, donations are, are various, uh, businesses around town, as well as at the American Legion. You can donate money, or you can bring in, uh, a, a coat that isn't too, too well-worn, uh, for kids, so that they, some of our, uh, those in needs, our children in need, have some warm clothing to wear, uh, this winter. But, uh, Saturday, oh, and of course, the big fireworks, uh, at the flats, uh, at, I think, six-thirty, seven o'clock, something like that. It'll be, pardon?
On the fifth?
On the fifth. Uh, and, uh, so that'll be, that'll be the equivalent of Fourth of July in December. So, uh, see those. Lots going on in our community.
I guess if you could have Christmas of July, you could have July and Christmas.
July and Christmas, you bet. Okay, um, uh, item number eleven, considered to, approval to convenia into executive session to discuss the International Association of Firefighters, uh, uh, negotiations, as well as the Fraternal Order of Police negotiations. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion and a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor, right hand. Unanimous approval, then, to move to executive session. We will see you all.